It's five o'clock. We'll call the meeting of ISD 361 School Board Order. Roll call, Tony Corpey. Emily McGonigal. Bruce Ravine.
Here.
Ted Saxton here, Roxanne Scopes-Deeche.
Here.
Joanne Smith. Jennifer Windows.
Here.
Kevin Groberg.
Present.
And Mitch Erickson, student representative.
Here.
Please stand for the Fudge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Go. Second by Rox.
Got a motion by Jen and a second by Rox for the discussion. Kevin, anything?
No, the only comment I would make is, just so that everyone's aware, depending on how the meeting goes, the truth in taxation piece cannot start till six o'clock. So we will recess if need be or stop for, you know, if it ends up being six-ten and we get to that point, then we just keep going. But other than that, no, I'm good to go.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call it to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries unanimously. Moving on to open forum, Elk Student of the Month. We'll start with Alicia Bolk.
I'm just thinking, you can take this and bring that. Alicia Bolk is one of the Elks Lodge 1599 Students of the Month for December. Alicia is the daughter of Michelle and Keith Bolk. She has taken several college and the school classes, but her true passion is in band. She has been in band since fifth grade and attends every fundraiser. She has been in pep band since seventh grade. She did the advertising for The Haunted House. Alicia was part of the speech and knowledgeable teams for several years. Ms. Hammer's commented that Alicia is thriving during her senior year at FHS this year. She has stepped outside of her comfort zone and challenged herself both socially and academically and has grown into a top student among her classmates. Alicia has proven herself as a top student and a role model in our school community. Outside of school, Alicia enjoys reading, writing, and playing her food. She loves taking walks with her dog, driving, and talking with friends. She is working two jobs and spends a lot of time hanging out with her cousins and listening to music. Her future plan is to attend the University of North Dakota next fall to major in music. Pursuing music as a career has been a passion and a dream. Alicia is undecided on the exact field under music or under the umbrella of music, but will enjoy the path of figuring that out. Alicia Bolk, Elk's Student of the Month for December.
Congratulations. Elk Student of the Month, Kayden Mayfield.
Kayden is not with us tonight, but I am going to read his bio and present him with a plaque at another time. Kayden Mayfield is another one of the Elks Lodge 1599 Students of the Month for December. Kayden is the son of Crystal and Jason Mayfield. Kayden is a student that has not been in a lot of school extracurricular activities, but has focused his time for his passions of hunting, fishing, and being outside. Kayden has enjoyed the industrial ed field and taken welding one, welding two, CAD one, and CAD two, woods one. Kayden excelled in Anishinaabe one and Anishinaabe two. Kayden is a hands-on learner that excels in classes that keep him active. Mr. Sandberg said Kayden is polite, respectful, and uses his time well. He interacts in class and participates in conversations. Kayden enjoys being on a sled in the winter and four-wheeler in the summer. One source described Kayden as "a man of few words." Kayden is undecided on his future plans. Kayden Mayfield, December Elk Student of the Month.
A little pause for a moment. That concludes the open forum section of the meeting. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed. So move.
Second.
Got a motion by Bruce and a second by Jen. Any further discussion?
Only comment I would make, and obviously there's a fair number of things on there. And again, it's open, you know, consent again is stuff we're supposed to approve, you know, all or nothing, but I just want to point the sub-policy, which is number 23. Recently, finding employees is not getting to be easier, more challenging. Little Fork upped their substitute teacher pay to $145. That's $25 more a day than the district. That being said, I don't think we have much choice but to, you know, up our sum. We're at $120, so I'm proposing we go to $135, okay? It doesn't get approved tonight. This is the first reading. So it'll come back again, but I just throw it out because I didn't think it was something about a couple of comments, people, you know, mention it, that, you know, $25 a day, I'll go down there, you know, difference. 10, I think, I don't know if I'd drive there for 10 a day. You know, and that's why I didn't go to 145 unless the board thinks otherwise, you know, to be exactly the same. I can't say they were at 120 before. I didn't ask that. I just was given the new amount. It might have been a little more before too, I don't know, but... So I'm just throwing it out there. That's where we're at. And if you want something changed or discussed, we can, you know, reach out to me during the next month, because again, we could update and change. It'll come for approval next month.
May I add that?
Can you use, you know?
Hello? Okay, may I add that Little Fork also gets sparsity eight, so I'm wondering about why we're not going higher? We don't get the sparsity eight that Little Fork gets.
Any other discussion on the consent agenda? We'll actually abstain.
I, you know, Bruce, to be honest with you, just, it's a policy. And even if we were approving, like, say, the teachers' contract, you could vote on that.
Okay.
Because it's no, I mean, yes, you do sub, and I think it's, you know, noted, but it's not an individual, like, hiring your wife is a single item.
Okay.
So I'm just throwing it out. I don't have an issue, and I don't think we would have, be in conflict because it's not a single, it's a group deal, so.
Thanks for clarifying.
Yeah.
Okay, I got a motion by Bruce and a second by Jen. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call it to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It carries unanimously. Moving on to action item number one, resolution of acceptance of gifts and donations. I'll entertain a motion.
Go. Second by Rox.
Resolution for acceptance of gifts and donations. Whereas School Board Policy 706 establishes the guidelines for acceptance of gifts or donations to the district. Whereas the International Falls School District Board encourages the support of the district's educational programs through gifts or donations that meet the goals and objectives of the school district. Whereas Minnesota Statute 465.03 states the school board may accept a gift, grant, or device of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be it resolved, the School Board of International Falls Public School, ISD number 361, accepts with appreciation the following gifts, donations, or grants received by the school district. I have a motion by Jen Windows and a second by Roxanne Scopes-Deeche to accept these gifts and donations. The following voted in favor. We'll be back to that. That should be at the bottom. Stuart and Susan requests Bronco Holling, $1,000. In memory of Joel Hayes.
Haas.
Haas, from Richard and Rosalyn Kraft's to FHS Music Program, $50. Bronco Football Boosters Away Game Charter Bucks, $446.23. County Market Arena Scoreboard Sponsorship, $1,000. I have, like I said, I had a motion by Jen and a second by Rox. All those in favor signify by saying aye. 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 Opposed? It carries unanimously. Okay, action item number two. Approve the hire of Amy Ravine as title instructor, effective January 3, 2022, with Bruce abstaining. I'll entertain a motion.
So move by Rox.
Second.
Motion by Rox and a second by Emily. Any further discussion?
The only thing I would, just make sure everyone's on board, this is, you hired Janessa for the DFC grant contingent on finding a qualified replacement for her position, so we are very fortunate and very happy to add Amy to our staff. But I will say it is, what do you say, bittersweet because she's been in excellent sub, you know, as Bruce is, and with the tough spot we're in. Obviously, number one is to have the best employees we can, and so we just added to our staff, which is great, but takes away from the other pool, so, anyway, highly recommend.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call it to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries unanimously with Bruce abstaining. Action item number three. Set January organizational meeting for Monday, January 3, 2022 at 5:00 p.m. I'll entertain a motion.
So move Bruce.
Motion by Bruce, a second.
Second.
Second by Jen. Further discussion?
Just so everyone's aware, typically, it's a fairly short meeting. We'll do it at 5:00. It's going to be just like our normal, I'm going to say COVID update, but obviously, that's the first day back, so we're probably not going to have a whole lot. So my plan, if the board is okay, not going to be a long drawn-out session, but is to present student enrollment numbers, the start kind of our budget process. State has the majority of stuff lined out already. But just so you're aware, plan to probably spend about an hour, if that's okay with the board, kind of to do everything organizational, and then probably about a half an hour, you know, or whatever.
Sure.
Is that okay? I'm just asking.
Fine, yeah.
Since we're going to be here, use the time, like I say, not be a drawn-out marathon of three hours or anything, but that's the first step to kind of show where our numbers are right now and projections and so on. And then we will talk a little bit later about, you know, going forward. We'd like to spend time each month here, a little bit more, probably January, early February, on budget stuff to kind of do a, if you want to say it bare bones, if we didn't have any, yes, sir, here's where we're going to have to be in January. You're going to get your audit report. We already have the audit back, and I don't think there's any major surprises. Without the COVID money, we're going, you know, negative right now, just as planned. And it's in the ballpark of where we were talking, you know, 700, 800,000. So again, we're fine, you know, as long as we plan for the next two years. Use the money as we have some decided, but there's still some to decide yet. And then, like I say, have two tracks. One, when it's gone, here's where we have to be. Here's the stuff we're going to do for the next couple of years with that money to supplement. So for, okay, we'll plan for that on the third.
We can start at 5:15?
Yeah, we can, whatever time works, I mean, and we can move all meetings if you want.
Yeah, we can move all meetings at 5:15. We usually start at the organizational meeting.
Let's bring it up next month, or on the third, sorry. And I'll make a note to try and, but if I forget. But we will meet that night at 5:15, yes.
Okay.
If Bruce and Jen are okay with that.
Yeah, everything else is okay. Yeah, that's fine. Okay. So the same motion, except the time changed to 5:15. I've got a motion by Bruce and a second by Jen. Any further discussion? And then we'll call it to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It carries unanimously. Action item number four. Approve the principal's contract for July 1, 2023, to June 30, 2025. I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Got a motion by Jen. Second, and a second by Bruce. Any further discussion?
Other than this follows the exact same thing we did with the teachers' group. We just forgot to bring both of them last month. I think it was 3% the first year, 1% the second year, everything else, you know, just...
100% the first year?
I think three the first and one the second, I'm sure.
For the, so it's two years from now, though.
Yeah, it's not, it's the...
Yeah, it's not.
They did one and a half, one and a half, and the 2,000, 1,000 stipend for the first two years, and then they did a subsequent second contract.
Okay, I got a, any further discussion? I've got a motion by Jen and a second by Bruce. Hearing no more discussion, call it to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries unanimously. Action item number five. Approve unpaid medical leave request from Emily Amaru for July 24, 2022, February 25, 2022. I'll entertain a motion.
So move by Rox.
Motion by Rox, does that a second?
Second.
Second by Emily. Further discussion?
And just so the group, we're not going to talk anything in depth. It's a private issue. I stand behind and recommend this. It is a person that does not qualify for FMLA because of the number of hours worked. So as long as it's not, you know, an emergency, I could, you know, upfront, you know, 10 days, she needs it, she'll work with Missy. Those dates are approximate. You know, it could adjust one way or the other a little bit, but good employee, and we need to, I think, honor it or help her.
Any further discussion? I got a motion by Rox and a second by Emily. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries unanimously. Action item number six. Approve the resolution in support of the Congressional IDEA Full Funding Act. I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Was that Emily? Motion by Emily, does that a second? Second Bruce. Second by Bruce. This is one I would read after, if there's anything.
You should, and again, this is, this resolution is recommended by MSBA, and they've asked ahead of legislative, legislation time for boards across the state to approve, and I would recommend we go forward. So Ted, if you want to read it, I'm going to look up from there.
Okay, any further discussion?
Do you read?
Before I vote, or after?
Yeah, yeah, if you would, read it.
Before, okay. I've got a motion by Emily and a second by Bruce. Resolution in support of Congressional IDEA Full Funding Act. Whereas the International Falls School District recognizes the need for a strong investment in the Individuals with Disabilities and Education Act, IDEA. And whereas the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act was first enacted in 1975 to help ensure that all students with disabilities will have access to a free, appropriate public education, and IDEA is enactment more than 45 years ago. The current federal investment in IDEA is less than 14%, and whereas with the enactment of IDEA, the United States Congress committed to fund up to 40% of the additional cost of special education, thereby promising to provide up to 40% of the national average per pupil expenditure, which is currently estimated at $13,828 by the U.S. Department of Education. Whereas our nation's school districts face an increased demand for greater resources to fulfill the needs of students under IDEA, including those for students affected by multiple disabilities whose individual education plans require more resources. And whereas with each increase in the IDEA child count, the International Falls School District and others throughout the country continue to adjust their budgets to accommodate this increase in need and ensure that each child educated through IDEA receives the appropriate supports, with some school districts dedicating 40% or more of their general education budget to special education services. And whereas International Falls Public School District has $715,186 cross-subsidy for fiscal year '20, which is one part of the statewide cross-subsidy that was more than $673 million in fiscal year '20, '20, and is expected to grow to $806 million in fiscal year '25. Be resolved that the International Falls School District supports the IDEA Full Funding Act that will help strengthen the federal investment in special education by authorizing a 10-year plan to fully fund the federal share of IDEA. And be resolved that the International Falls School Board urges Congress strong bipartisan support for the passage of the IDEA Full Funding Act. And now therefore be resolved that the International Falls School District Board remains committed to providing students with disabilities and their families the support they need. I had a motion by Emily and a second by Bruce. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like, did it say that in 10 years, is it, are you reading it as in 10 years, they plan to fully fund?
The plan, two things. One, there was, and again, it's just a minor speaking error. Earlier, when it talked per pupil, it's 13,000, whatever, you said 13,000.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
No, no, it's no big, but the, what they're shooting for is to try and press, pressure Congress to fully fund over a 10-year span. You know, they're not going to turn the light switch from paying 40% to 100%, but they're pushing, and MSBA is obviously behind this, to get special ed fully funded. And that's really what the board is either saying, we're on, you know, we're in agreement to advocate for that, taking some of the pressure off local districts, you know.
Is it, but is it any different than what we have always tried to say, we need to try to fully?
No, no, it's no different. It's just they're going to keep pushing, Rox, you know what I'm saying? It's the ongoing, it is the right and ethical thing to do, free, appropriate, public education for all. And it's, like I say, it's just, here we go again, and so they're...
Especially the part where they've already committed to fund it, but they just don't, so.
So, anyway, where it'll get it, who knows, but I think we have to at least have our name on the document along with.
It's got to change sometime. I have a motion by Emily and a second by Bruce. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call it to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It carries unanimously. Moving on to committee and administrative reports. Mitch Erickson, student representative. Could you get a pop-up from behind the camera?
You can say, get on the other side for a bit. All right, perfect, okay. So, Student Council, we had a food drive, was it last month, a month and a half ago? We raised 213 pounds. We're going to have another food drive coming up, the 24th through the 28th this January. We'll have a box out in the lobby for any community members that want to donate to, and then the school will have a competition between each first, or first-hour classes, too. Winter Sports Week is coming up. That will be the, I've got to get the date down right here. 17 through the 21st, I believe, and the Pet Fest will be that Friday. And we're hoping we will be able to get ninth through 12th grade into the gym. I know in the arena, we just had 10 through 12th grade, but we moved it back to the gym this year, and we're hoping to get ninth through 12th graders into the gym for the Pet Fest, so we're planning Winter Sports Week right now. So that's kind of our January thing there. We, last week, we had a holiday spirit week, trying to get more kids engaged in the school. We had some dress-up days, ugly sweater, I believe, and we had some contest winners for that. Otherwise, we just had the Christmas week, try to get people more involved at the school, and, yeah. We're also looking for volunteer opportunities, so if anyone has anything coming up that they need help with, we will, we can help. So we just got an email, too, so studentcouncil@isd361.org. So if anyone wants to email us anything, volunteer opportunities coming up, need any help with anything, we're kind of open right now, so we're just kind of looking at things to do.
Can you say the email one more time?
Yep, studentcouncil@isd361.org. So, all right, that's kind of all I have for you guys. Any questions?
Any questions for that? Thank you for the report.
Perfect, yep.
Melissa Tate, elementary principal. We'll run you a microphone back.
We're at 4:42 for numbers. That's down three from last month. And then, just recently, last week, PCA sponsored a movie and treats for all our preschool through grade five students. And so the parents and I took the kids each day to provide work time for the teachers while the kids are at the movies, so the kids really enjoyed that. So thank you to PCA and the parents for helping me to make that happen for the kids and the teachers. And then we're going to be starting something new after winter break called Learn to Lead Group, and that's for fifth-grade students that have been identified by their classroom teachers, kids who really exhibit some leadership qualities, and our plan is to kind of do some explicit direct teaching of leadership qualities. Jordan and Seth will be leading that group, and Jordan will be working with the female students, and Seth will be working with the male students, and then we'll come together. Anyway, our plan is to kind of build those leadership skills through direct teaching of that group, and then eventually have those kids, like, going into the classrooms to survey their peers, to see what kind of things, like, that their peers are seeing on the playground, or things that they'd like to see or around the school. So hopefully to empower them to make some changes and build culture in their own school community, and then we hope to eventually have them also facilitate lessons, like, down into even smaller groups. And then, um, we have, we do have relay recess on the calendar for January 21st, but I don't know, we may have to postpone because, um, we still haven't really brought all of our groups together in one space, so I guess depending on numbers, we may just postpone and wait until the spring when we can maybe be outside, um, because even when we went to the movies, we stayed at, um, grade levels and separated and had the students sit as a class, so we didn't combine everybody into one theater, so. Um, and I just wanted to, uh, let you know that I did just see, MD and Kevin let me know too, is now offering a limited amount of seats for letters training, and they're prioritizing, um, K through three teachers. They previously had a pilot program that I'm assuming must have went well, because now they're opening it up for more spots where MD would pay, and I'm only telling you that because I think it reinforces that we are on the right track, like, there are many states who have went to make letters training mandatory in their states, there's probably about eight of them, and so I think at some point we may see that in Minnesota too, so we will be ahead of the game, so.
Is that training the trainer?
No, that is just letters training. And, um, through the dashboard I can see Seth's progress and Seth is really flipping along, so I don't think there'll be any issues with getting that by January 17th with what I had asked them to complete, and then.
Missy, if I can stop you one second, and, and I'm not going to use the person, um, person's name, but I was in the elementary on Friday, and one of the teachers came up to me and went, I just got to tell you, here's a prime example of what we just learned, and it was a concept in letters, and she was seeing it with her kids making the same mistake over and over, and she said, it explains, you know, and again, I didn't go into depth, but someone seeked me out to say, here it is, you know, and so I just throw that out, that's not saying everyone agrees or whatever, but one of them, hey, light bulb came on and seeing, uh, I guess I'm just a similar, a lot of the kids making a similar mistake in whatever they were reading and learning about, it explained it, or, you know, so I just throw that out.
Um, and then just, we're excited to welcome Amy to, um, to our staff, you know, we're up and at the sub, we'll miss her, but the beauty of here is sometimes they be stuck too, they're so flexible, we appreciate their flexibility, so, um, we're excited to welcome Amy to our fold, and then, um, on January 17th, we have letters training set up for early childhood through K-5 students, so early childhood will be in a different training and then K-5, K-3 will be in a different training.
What's on, no?
Thank you, Missy. Um, Tim Erisson, secondary principal?
Yes, our current numbers at the high school are 532, we're down two from last month, we're down 19 from last year at this time. On the 17th, our in-service day, we're going to have Move This World Training, that's our SEL program that we're using, um, teachers are showing videos, we'll have that in the morning, and then we're going to have a self-care presentation in the afternoon. We, our winter break is going to run from this Thursday to the 23rd through Sunday this January 2nd, with school resuming on Monday the 3rd, and our quarter and semester will end on Friday, January 21st. I know that that'll be a few days after our next meeting, but I just wanted to let people know that it's kind of crazy we're that close to the end of the semester now. We will have the meeting on Tuesday, correct, on the 18th, because of the holiday?
Oh, sorry, yeah. Oh, yeah, we haven't got, we haven't got, I have that on my. But the 3rd, that first Monday is not a holiday this year, because, I mean, typically the first Monday is often New Year's celebrated or observed, but this year it's observed back, so the 3rd is not, but, um, I have it in mind, the January and February reminder, the school board, regular school board meetings are on the 3rd Tuesday because of the federal holidays.
So it'll be the 18th.
I haven't looked at the dates, but in January and February.
Correct. Anything else, Ted? That's all I have. Okay, thank you very much. Kevin Grover, superintendent?
Okay, um, and some of this I already hit on, um, so January 3rd, I mentioned, we'll do our reorganization meeting, but we're also going to present student numbers and some, you know, graphs and data, and again, go through that piece and get the, get the ball rolling for the budget process. Um, I will also probably have some, again, I shared the SRS survey, um, with you, and I, in the next, hopefully the next week, week and a half, I'm going to resubmit our SRS survey with that community input. Again, we're going to adjust that survey numerous times over the next two years, depending on what decisions are made, but, um, that's the piece that was holding any event back from starting to get pieces of approval was we did not have, um, community input, so anyway, we'll get that going, but there's going to be numerous decisions to be made. Teamwork, after our meeting that we recommended entering into contract, went back and had a conversation, and everything is fine, it's just we were not able to get a time set where Tim, Missy and I and Ray could get together until this Wednesday, so we will have our first, um, meeting and kind of go through, um, and then we will be bringing back a recommendation, that might even come on the 3rd, you know, of what we come up with. Um, I mentioned our audit, um, which will be presented, formally presented at the January meeting, and the only other thing I throw out is, um, and it's, uh, just so everyone's in the loop, as far as, we can talk COVID numbers if you want to, but, um, the federal, I might say this the wrong way, but I believe the courts upheld the federal, I'm going to say mandate for employers over 100 people to begin requiring either proof of vaccination or testing, and I think it had an effective date of January 10th, and, but there would be no, as long as you were working towards it, no penalty to get it in place the next month. Now, keep in mind, Minnesota operates under its own OSHA, okay, so Minnesota OSHA has now has to act, I think there's 16 states that don't follow the government, or the federal plan, but it typically mimics it or is, I'm going to say, as they say, more stringent, um, so that hasn't come yet, but, so we're just, again, MSBA sent out, uh, an update, was it, I think this morning, it might have been Friday, you know, reiterating that, that they're guessing very soon the state now, since the federal has made their decision, will either go along with the same thing or something similar, so just so the board's aware, when whatever is decided, we as a district will follow, you know, and have to play ball, if that's the right word, and we'll work through, you know, I think, um, we have a good number of people, I don't have a list of everyone that's vaccinated, we have the capability to do testing, which is going on, and I just hope for the sake of, I guess I'm going to say the kids, that people will comply and it'll all go as smooth as can be, you know, but if not, we will follow whatever direction that is, so, um, when that comes out, we will start the ball rolling and, and again, work through it in, um, just timely manner, you know, but the, the feeling is it's going to follow the same as the federal, that will either, you know, show us proof or get on a list and we'll have to figure out testing. And did you have a?
Did you, I didn't hear you mention the Minnesota School Board Association conference, is that still happening in person?
Yeah, as of right now, it is still, we were on, uh, last Thursday, I was on a call with Kirk, the executive director, and as of right now, they are still moving forward in person. He was open that, you know, it definitely could change, but as of right now, they, they were, you know, moving forward with, it was in person, and, um, that's all I can say. I mean, it could be, you know, a week before, they pull the pin and we're going virtual or doing something different, but right now.
Okay.
Okay? And again, we'll touch base, I guess I didn't plan on tonight, but those, the four of us, assuming things are still, I would say at the 3rd, we can figure out, you know, leave time and whatever our plans are.
Who's going?
There, there's Ted, Rox, yourself, and Tony, and myself.
Who's going to go?
Are you going to go?
Yeah.
Oh, I mean, we'll make it work, I didn't have you on the list, but yeah, love to have you, it's perfect.
Oh, it wasn't called this.
Okay, no, and I maybe made a mistake, but we'll, we'll make it work, so, bye.
Just talking with you. Sure.
That is all I have.
Rox brings the fun in, I guess. Okay, thank you. Any questions for Kevin, you know, um, community education update?
And, and Beth is just, I'm going to pull up, she, she submitted a sheet here or kind of an update, and she's online here, can you unmute Beth or?
I am unmuted.
Okay, we can hear you, I just.
Hi, Beth.
Hi. Um, so lots, I mean, as of right now, we've been able to hold, since I started, we were able to hold a CPR first aid class for a business that needed to be relicensed in that. Um, I want to give a huge shout-out to Jacqueline Lanou, she was able to pull everything together very short notice, I wasn't even, um, really registered on the American Red Cross at that point, and she just stepped up and did everything. She is our water fitness instructor, and she, um, is also going to renew her lifeguard license here for me, so that she will be a backup lifeguard, and she will continue doing the water fitness, so, um, I really appreciate her. We were able to do a defensive driving class in November, um, we just finished water fitness, um, we will start up a new class on the 3rd, that continues to be a popular class, and we expanded our open swimming, um, since water fitness had, um, ended for the year or for that quarter, and, um, wa, open swimming continues to have, um, very good numbers, and, um, people, I've been reaching out and appreciating that we have it two times a week. Hopefully, we will get some lifeguards trained in January, um, we do have that class coming up at the end of January, I do have two that have said they would like to do it, I did send out some flyers to swim team, to the swim team, both the boys and the girls, put it out on Facebook, um, I will do another push starting after Christmas to try to get some more lifeguards. Um, the pool is con, I'm constantly getting calls on the usage of pool, it, um, it's very rare that I don't deal with something with a pool every day, and I am also currently trying to straighten up the community ed room, which is 204, up next to the study hall room at the high school, trying to get that organized so that, um, 4H will be doing a program starting in February, we collaborate with them, and we would like to start a after-school program for youth, kindergarten through fourth grade on Wednesdays for early out, um, but the room needs to be organized and straightened up, and, um, so that is what I'm working on now. And do you have any questions for me?
Any questions?
Beth, I'd be.
Can you use your, you need your mic or she won't hear?
Beth, do you, you guys are still doing, um, swimming lessons, true, right?
Yes, I, yep, I just heard from, I have two, um, girls that are coming back from Christmas, and I just heard from them today that they were starting to reach out to parents, um, this week, today and tomorrow, probably tomorrow after we got done emailing, um, that they will set up, um, swim lessons. I'm not, I don't like the process that we do is where, um, we have the lifeguards reach, or the water instructors reach out to the parents and try to do it, and I don't know what's going on, but right now, that's the way we're going to do it, because we had a list that they had, and I didn't have it, and I had a list that, that they had, people had called me to try to get on the list, so, once we get this list that they had and I had, um, kids in their swim lessons, we're going to work on trying to streamline and make that a better process for both parents and, and community ed, it's, it's not a very good process, um, but we will be working on that. Um, the lady Jacqueline that I had, um, mentioned, she also can teach swim lessons, and, um, once I got, oh, I just got up and running an American Red Cross today, they had misspelled my name and then couldn't find me because they misspelled it, so I got my account today, so I should be able to register her in, so she, she's going to start taking some lessons, or doing some lessons, so hopefully we will get more lessons done.
Get caught up, in essence, yeah.
Get caught up and then get more skin, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
One thing, and just because we're going to have a little time less, you want me to fill some time now, or do you want to finish, I don't know, do recreation and then?
Okay.
Sorry, yeah.
Recreation commission, um, do we have some members here from that board? Bruce, somebody on that? Yeah, I was not at that meeting. Okay. I'm sure, so you?
What I was just going to, and I forgot to mention, um, if you look at our website, and COVID numbers, just if you're not up, things are moving in a, I'm not even going to say this, a good direction, it's not to where we want yet, we're down, and again, that sounds bad, down to 12 cases in the district, but from two weeks ago or going back for the recent, um, little bit, that is down, zero staff right now, so that's a good thing. I think it's nine elementary and three high school, I think, thereabouts, don't quote me, I updated it two hours ago, you'd think I'd remember, but I don't. Um, so, anyway, that, that's where we're at, we'll keep monitoring, obviously, and, um, for whatever it's worth, the, um, the, the regional people that are on our Thursday call, every Thursday with the Supes, um, you know, the, the graph for the most part from a year ago to this year is very similar, you know, I'm not saying the numbers are exactly the same, but the, the graph pattern for, and we're just going to say it, the, the deer season slash Thanksgiving peak is very similar to last year, and it starts, just like they said, it starts coming off right now as we go into Christmas, if it continues to follow, we'll see another peak, but not as high. Now, Omnicron or whatever, it's a whole nother, you know, piece of it, but if it would follow the same, we'll see, and then we should, you know, go down, not saying there's no little bumps or whatever for the remainder of the year, knock on wood, but again, the new variant, that's a whole nother piece of it, but they're just saying the whole fall kind of followed it very similar to a year ago, so for whatever that's worth, and it may be nothing, you know, right now, it's, it's following, hey, get through Christmas and, you know, but titled up. Rox?
Um, do you have the approximate percentage of teachers and percentage of students that are being tested on a regular, weekly basis?
Well, I would guess in, the tested in school is only about 15 percent, and that's a rough guess, you know, people doing home tests, we have no.
Right.
You know, no indication but what Katie is doing here.
Fifteen percent for each group, do you say about?
No.
For the 15 percent of our students, so 15?
And it might not even be, you know, I, I'd have to check, at, at one point, we were hovering around 100, you know, and I assume that has went up some since actually what happened, and, and this is just cool, and of course, you, you live and learn, um, those testers, we can actually hook multiple up to the same iPad, you know, we were trying, and that was kind of, we actually got more readers, you know, originally, that took some time, and so, um, we got more tests because we had to, which is a good thing, and so I think we're up to six readers, six or eight readers, I'm not sure, um, and she's probably, she might not be running eight, but she might be running six at a time or something, so she can test more, which is a good thing, um, and I guess I haven't asked or updated, and of course, it varies, I mean, I was up, I was up last Thursday and a couple people, you know, hadn't come, kids, she, you know, calls, but staff is on a, you know, you're scheduled, you come.
And when you say 100, you mean 100 total, not 100 percent, you mean?
No, 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 correct.
100 total, which is about 15 percent.
Well, and again, um, and it probably, if you took all employees, it would not come out that, but, you know, take for instance, we're 900 students, okay, um, and they're a point, what was it, point two or point eight or something was our FTE recently, uh, I mean, just say it was 80, 90 of 900, roughly 10 percent there, you know, staff, I, I guess, I don't know exactly the number, except I haven't asked for an exact count, and I can. Again, it's optimistic, but it's not near, you know, we'd love to have, we'd love to have 100 percent tested every day or every week, but we're not there. And again, if things are going well, and I told her, when we come back from break break, I'm going to do another, um, push, if you will, to encourage, you know, Facebook, and so long as we're good to go and we can handle it, you know, um, I didn't want to push when we were still lagging, it took a few weeks to get to where we were getting every kid each week, every staff member each week, so if we're good to go, we'll push it again and see if we can get more. So if we're good to go, we'll push it again and see if we can get more.
Just because I learned a lot over the last few weeks, I just would like to also say that the home tests are not, you can't, they're not reliable if you don't have symptoms. If you're not bad enough to have symptoms, or you got enough of a viral load, you will get a false negative pretty high percentage. The only thing that they're good for is positives, you're a pretty high percentage of accuracy if you have symptoms. And that's exactly what I saw in my household, too. So I just want people to know that the home tests are not PCR tests.
The home test is very, and again, this is the way, my understanding, very accurate, be it positive or negative, for people that have symptoms. If I was asymptomatic, and I used the take-home tests, they're not as accurate, and that's why it's a different test. And again, I'm not even gonna pretend to understand, but that's why there are, even here, you know, there are different tests for the asymptomatic compared to if I have symptoms and go down to Leah and say, hey, I'm not feeling good, I gotta, I need a test. She uses a different test than if I went to Katie once a week with no symptoms.
However, Katie's once-a-week tests at the school are PCR.
Yeah, yeah, but that's meant for asymptomatic.
They're not the standard answer, they're PCR tests, which are better than the home method of tests.
Correct. Okay. So that's all I have, Ted, I just wanted to.
Thank you. So, should I recess, or do you want to reopen?
Let's just recess, otherwise, we gotta do a whole separate meeting.
So, we're gonna recess until six o'clock, and so, don't talk about school board stuff.
And I would encourage you, I guess, to shut your mic off. Anyone online can wait with us if you would like, and we'll do the truth and taxation right at six o'clock.
John, you wanna go in the hallway?
Sure.
Step outside.
Step outside.
Oh, he's calling you.
I need to get a bank card signature. So, I need to sign. I'm excited, I'm fully owning my credit.
No, I know why.
Who's the opening?
That's Beth.
Who's the opening? Bruce?
All sudden.
Is Tony around?
Well, Tony's around, she just, she sent something saying.
I'll get her tomorrow, 'cause I gotta have the levy signed along, too. Okay, so then these.
Is the truth and taxation just a short?
It should be, I mean, unless people have tons of questions, but I think Stace is gonna run through the graphs, and we can, I mean, the main thing, there's eleven, twelve percent hike for one year, but it's a hundred percent the elementary project we knew coming in, if it wasn't, you know, that we did last year. So one-year hit, if we didn't have that, your levy would be going down, and, you know, I mean, you'll see it, it's three hundred and eighty thousand, we're not going up that much, but that's the big chunk. So, that said, you know, it's pretty cut and dry, you know. So unless someone pops on or comes in that has a ton of questions, typically, we present what we have to, you know, the slides that we have to present, and.
What does it matter, because after our negotiations, I'd like for a massage.
Oh, DJ, good for you. Wow. And again, it wasn't that contentious or whatever, it just was drug out for four and a half, five hours, I don't know what it was.
It was like four and a half.
Yeah, ten to two thirty, three, two forty, so, yeah.
That's very great.
It was probably my fault, 'cause I had said, other than, you know, when we met last time, other than having the board meeting at five o'clock, I'll devote my day to that, you know?
You're jinxed, though.
Yeah. There you go.
Stace, what's gonna? Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's probably best to be able to do.
Yeah, I can minimize the, I can make it, can I make it bigger or not?
You'll open it separately.
What's that?
Yeah, you'll open it separately, and it's all in one box, so, thank goodness, because.
No, this is how it opened. This is how it opened?
So, I would pull out, just, I'm trying to, are you ready?
No, I was just gonna, if I close this up here, I can say.
Oh, not hurting everybody. So, I don't want to be separate.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
I can get off there, can I? No. Can I sit here and do it, or do you need to?
No, as long as you get it.
Enjoy.
Does he have lights?
Can you just let your man off camera?
Well, yeah. So, then, are you guys just gonna have a quiet Christmas?
We will, like, here. Some kind of, it's like, come on, I said. We're not gonna celebrate, we're just gonna. So, luckily, I had her the first time I was home, and she has been absolutely Godsend because now they're gonna go through all the Christmas, I just have to move from my daddy to protect him at home, and now, seeing the hires, I don't have anyone on the front porch, or anyone on the kitchen table, I would be happy to have her.
Bruce, you said you had a brother come in? Did you say to go fishing? Did you say you had, I thought you said you had a, I thought there were only you and one brother?
It was my brother-in-law.
Oh, brother.
And my father-in-law.
Oh, okay. Okay, I thought, for some reason, I must misread.
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, brother-in-law.
Father-in-law, yeah.
Where'd they come from?
My brother-in-law came, he went from Atlanta, Georgia, yeah, he flew off Saturday.
Okay.
But he just, he was a, he's a doggone.
Okay.
And my father-in-law's eighty-four, and I used to get him all.
Perfect.
Very enjoy it.
Wow, and I hate to say it now, is the time to go if you want action. I mean, not the whole winter, but it's hard to, hard to beat. I debate, because, again, Red Lake, you know, has gotten hit hard, and it's earlier than Lake of the Woods, but in my mind, you catch nicer fish, but not near as many. In fact, and on Saturday, or Sunday, it was due, which way do you go, and, you know, I wanna act, you know, which you normally, but it's a matter of, do you wanna catch a lot of little ones, have action, or would you rather catch, you know, four or five a day, maybe, or, you know, and again.
Well, my experience on ringing out past bridge point is, you kept zero, so.
Well.
Or one eel po.
Well, no, and, Ted, I actually thought of you, 'cause your wife, from what you've said, lost, have you ever done, like, rented a house over?
No, I thought of, I, we were gonna do it a couple years ago, and I thought that that'd be a good present.
No, that's the exact thing I was thinking about this weekend, you know, I was, I was still thinking this and that, you know, and that, you know.
Well, they took us from, you know, they figured, from your cabin. Trailer, alternative, these special trailers that they rigged up, they preheated. Yeah, that might be something, we're pretty busy until after January, but that might be.
No, just something to think of, 'cause you said she loves to go out and sit and sell fishing.
That wasn't my idea a couple years ago, and it's flipped my mind since then, so.
But even by then, it'll be dry vote, you know?
Yeah.
Just go rent a house for a day, dry vote. Okay, it is six o'clock, so.
Oh, okay. What's official, we're recessed, we're gonna.
Come back into session.
We're gonna come back into session at 6:00 PM for our truth and taxation meeting. I will reiterate who's with us. Bruce Ravline, Ted Saxton, Roxanne Scopes-Adich, Emily McGonigal, Jen Windows, Kevin Grover, superintendent, and we still have a Mid-Arizona student representative hanging out with us tonight.
So if you start, Stace will do the presentation.
So we'll receive the truth and taxation presentation.
You're good?
Yep.
Okay. Kevin's gonna control the slide, so, we're gonna go to the next page. Can you make that, can you, everybody see that all right? It's a little small.
I can't, I mean, there's no, this isn't.
Can you get it bigger? Okay. Well, that's a little bad. Okay, so, the purpose of the truth and taxation meeting is just to go over the levy that you are certifying, which is twenty-one, pay twenty-two, which is really gonna be your fiscal twenty-three revenue. And what we do is, is we, this is the levy you're certifying here tonight, the comparison is taking that levy and comparison, comparing it to current year revenue projection that you were given in June, and current year expense, expenses. So the current levy that you're gonna certify tonight is for three, three million, one hundred ninety-three thousand, three hundred forty-nine dollars. That in compared to the fiscal twenty-two revenue budget, ten thousand, eight hundred nine, four hundred eighty-five thousand dollars is coming from other sources. So the total revenue budget for fiscal twenty-two, fourteen thousand, fourteen million, call it, is the total budget. So if you look at the graph, sorry, twenty-three percent of the total revenue budget is coming from the levy, and eighty-two percent of the total revenue for fiscal twenty-two is coming from other sources. Okay?
And keep in mind, understand that they, they don't work out to be exactly a hundred percent, you know, just the way.
It's roughly.
Yeah.
And keep in mind, this levy really is gonna be fiscal twenty-three, it's really not twenty-two, it's just the way we have to present it. Then, the levy has, is broken out into four different categories. There's general referendum market value, general RMB, then there is the general other net tax capacity, then there is the community service, and then debt service and the total levy. So the, basically, what this is showing is, by bucket, general referendum market value really is, remains flat, it's not changed from the current levy to the one that we're proposing. The general other net tax capacity has the greatest increase, community ed is down, debt service is down slightly. Overall, the total net levy, twenty-one, pay twenty-two, went up three hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars, five hundred ninety, three hundred thirty-eight thousand, five hundred ninety dollars. That is represented a little differently on the next slide. What it represents for the general fund is a sixteen and a half levy increase. For the community service fund, the levy is down nine percent, and for debt service, the debt service levy amount is down five point six four. In total, the total levy is up eleven point eight six percent now. The, that is a one-time increase. So the bulk of the increase in the general fund is due to our Falls Elementary HVAC project, which is, we had, so we're, what we're seeing is a one-time levy increase. Had we not had that HVAC, the total levy would've gone down. So, of that three hundred thirty-eight thousand increase, three hundred seventy-four thousand was due to the HVAC project, and then there's a bunch of other adjustments that occur. So if you take that HVAC project out, the levy would've gone down. So this is just a one-year increase, this, that jump will not continue with the twenty-two, pay twenty-three levy. It'll, it'll go away. Okay, so, really, if we didn't have that, your levy would've gone down or remained the same. Okay? Then what we're again just showing is your revenue, tentative revenue budget for all funds. All funds being your general fund, your community service, your food service, your debt service, and your donations, and Fund Eighteen, which is basically scholarships. So it's just really kind of saying, your local sources are producing three point four million of that budget. State sources are providing nine point four million, federal sources, one point, one million, and other sources is coming in at fifty-two thousand. So your total revenue budget of fourteen thousand is broken in, oh, into these different revenue.
Fourteen million.
Revenue sources, what did I say?
Thousand.
Sorry. Next page. And then this really is just kind of a recap of the twenty-two expense budget, again, for all funds. So what this is breaking out is by program. So district and administration, six hundred ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars. District support services, seven hundred twenty-five thousand. Elementary and secondary education programs, six point four. Vocational, sixty-six thousand, call it. Special education, one point eight million. Community education expense, four hundred forty-three thousand. Instructional support, three hundred thirty-nine thousand. People support services, one point eight million. Sites and buildings, one point nine million. Fiscal and other costs are in at five hundred ninety-four thousand. For a total expense budget of fourteen million, nine hundred eighty dollars, or, yeah, fourteen million, nine hundred eighty, eight hundred thousand, eighty thousand, excuse me. I forgot that. And that's pretty much it, unless anybody has questions and/or there's questions online, but overall, the levy would've, is, it's just a one-time increase, and then we'll see it come back down. Any questions? Thank you for that.
I don't have any questions, and I don't see anything online.
No, unless there's, Beth is the only one online that I see, unless, if she has a question, she can unmute. Questions from the board, I mean, it's a recommendation, obviously, to support the levy where it's at, otherwise, you take more out of your general fund.
So, if there's not any questions, then I will entertain a motion to certify the twenty-one, pay twenty-two fiscal year twenty-three levy at three million, one hundred ninety-three thousand, three hundred forty-nine dollars and sixteen cents. Undertain a motion?
Oh, by Rox.
The motion by Rox, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Emily, is that you?
Yes.
Second by Emily. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call it to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, carries unanimously. All right, next up is adjournment of my last full board chair meeting. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
And if we don't use it, no.
We're just gonna keep on sitting here.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, and the sole, the motion was Bruce.
I'll second.
And a second by Rox. Any further discussion? Time six oh eight, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, carries unanimously. We are adjourned.